Okay, we'll get the meeting started. I want to welcome everybody here. Monday, February 6th, our second meeting of the new year. If any time during the meeting you have to ask a question or ask something that you might hear, and you want to just raise your hand so we can recognize you as well. But there is two sections in the agenda. If everybody picked up agenda when you signed in, that we take things off the floor as well. So with that said, our Borough Manager, Paul Williams, would do the roll call.
Yes, Vice President Carroll.
Here.
Councilperson Henrich.
Here.
Councilperson Meese.
Here.
Councilperson Charles.
Here.
Councilperson Knapp.
Present.
Also present this evening include Mayor Jeff Free, Elizabeth Moles, junior councilperson, Solicitor Robert Kravitz, Assistant Borough Manager Sharon Edman, Administrative Assistant, and Record Secretary this evening, Shelly Weaver, and Borough Manager Paul Williams. Vice President Carroll, I just want to note that Mr. Radnitsky, and as President and Councilperson Carroll are absent, but you do have a court established to hold this meeting.
Thank you. We're going to have a moment of silent reflection. After that, we'll do the standing and Pledge of Leaders to the Flag to your right in the audience.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carroll, I just like to share with people before you do the sign-in sheet. Back right, your back right is Daniel Lehman, and he's here tonight from our Boy Scout troop. He's working on the Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge this evening. I also want to acknowledge someone else in the audience this evening, who's Susquehanna University student, Isaac Riston. And I'm just going to have him raise his hand here in a minute. He is a part of the Steering Committee on the Comprehensive Plan, and I'm glad to have Isaac here tonight as well. Thank you.
And everybody did sign in, I hope. We appreciate that. First thing on the agenda will be review of the Council Minutes from January 9th. After looking and reviewing it, do we have a motion? Unless there's any corrections, to accept.
I make the motion approved, the Minutes as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have a second? All those in favor, say with my standing aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
No ayes.
Any ahs? All right, we're going to get into the government, non-government agencies to be heard. DHNL, they're here. Don't forget to state your name if you come up to the mic, so we can record that as well.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Sean Christine, DHNL Fire Company. As of fire reports for the month of January 2017, in January, from January 1st to 2017 to the 31st, there were three building fires. One chimney fire, eight medical assists, seven motor vehicle accidents with injuries, one motor vehicle accident without injury, one gas leak, one smoke or odor removal, one animal rescue, one assist police, one public service call, one false alarm, three alarm systems responses due to malfunction, and three calls for alarm activation, for a total of 32 calls. Those responses were one in the borough of Freeburg, five in Monroe Township, 13 in Penn Township, one in Richfield, nine in the borough of Seale's Grove, one in Sunbury, one in Union Township, and one in Washington Township. That concludes the fire reports. We have the answer to the questions you have.
I'm sorry, could I just see, man hours, total man hours was that?
Total man hours, 46.3.
Anybody else have any comments or any questions they're asking after the report?
Just false activations, is that the same place that you keep hearing false activations?
Doesn't list on here where it is.
There's no good chance it is.
It happens quite a bit. We end up going to the same place over and over again, but it could be anywhere from here to Monroe Township. We have activation calls quite a bit.
Oh, okay, but it's not any one particular spot, one business or anything like that?
Is that something we get reimbursed after so many false alarms? They get notified, or is that something with the police department side?
We have the discretion to bill, or to bill for that.
Do you ever institute that, too, after it gets to be a problem?
They have some years ago, but not in recent history.
Is that something you do track?
Yeah, it really hasn't happened enough to really be noteworthy. Usually if you get a couple, they figure out how to fix it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Thank you. Okay, I have this here report for Seale's Grove Projecting. Do we have anybody here that would like to say anything on Seale's Grove Projecting? No? All right, you have a report from the chamber, it's in your packet. And then the next one will be Richard Meese on the pool. No report this morning. I saw signs up, I guess you're gearing up and giving discounts, so they're out and about. I see them on the bulletin board.
We have discounts for several passes or good until the end of the cut to work.
Park and Rec. Anybody from Park and Rec? All right, and then we're going to get into the Penny Projects at CDP-COG, Gunda Brook. You have that in your packet. Paul, you want to pick up from there?
Sure, the first item, I'll board the CDG curb and sizable contract, and we do have the bid tabulation in front of you. We did receive two bids. The recommendation, based upon conversation today with members of the finance committees, is to reject all bids and rebid. The one bidder is relatively, I'm going to say, high in comparison to what we know as the 2015 prices, historic prices, and we don't think it's in line with what the market bears today. And the other person, Street Edge Concrete, he really submitted an incomplete application. So the recommendation is to reject all bids and let's test the waters again.
Are we going to notify the people that put in and explain to them, this is going to go out for rebid?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? So there will be, we don't need a...
Got an authorization for rebid of these motions.
Okay. So we're going to need a motion to deny the requests for bids that we got in, and that it's going to be redid.
That's a...
Okay, we have a first, we have a second. I'll second it. We have a second. All those by saying aye, who permit?
Aye.
Any ayes? Any ahs? Or ahs? Number two?
Number two, so the purple sheet, followed by the yellow sheet, but first of all, the purple sheet number two, it's really a project summary of the elevations that are taking place and really have been completed with Wachaw family and, I'll move the second one.
Schrader.
Schrader family. So Wachaw being at 108 South Third Street, Schrader 215 South Second Street. Both times have been elevated. Elevation certificate has been accepted. On the backside of the sheet, it has a timeline of things to look forward to following the final inspections that are scheduled for February 14th, and that would be the Schrader property. I'm going to say culminating actually in April of 2018 with a close ad letter from PMA. So we're on track. The units had been elevated by DE construction in a timely manner. It was supposed to finish work by February 7th, and he's met that date, or he will have met that date. And one house is already occupied, the Wachaw, and soon to be the second. The other update, the yellow sheet, this were different source of funds, this is CBGDR, which is Disaster Relief Funds. This report came from Mike Fisher. And once again, he lets, he sets out a timeline. He identifies the two properties that have been eligibility approved, and they are at 402 South Front Street and 312 South Front Street. Both projects are moving towards an application and appearance before the zoning hearing board. On box the second, there's variance that's needed, and that there's a yard encroachment of the staircases and landings that come down into the required setbacks and those jars. And then the project should really go forth after that point in time for construction permits. Bid notice, bids elevation, it's suggested that there will be a construction of 15 weeks with construction completion by July, July 21st of this year. Keep in mind that, I guess, all this work, that answer reads all through 2011, and it just takes a number of years to accomplish, and this is a part of the work that you will have four additional numbers on the aisle if you elevate it.
Question. When we, is backing up one on the curb rejecting the bid? Was our motion to reject the bid and advertise all now, is correct? I know we had discussed the finance committee that has a two motion.
Okay. Let's just, so since other ones, that's fine, okay. Thank you, she, there, Paul?
Yeah.
Nope.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
At this time, I see the sign-in sheet, I don't see anybody indicated they would like to speak. Is there anybody present who would like to make any comments or speak at this time?
Yep.
We do, oh, sorry, yes, sir.
You would make up...
Yes, if you would. You don't get to state your name, but keep it on record.
Hi, my name is Isaac Riston. I'm an SU student. The reason why I'm here today is the Student Government Association has restructured their constitution, and they want to reach out to community more, so they're having me come to all meetings, so that way we can keep informed, and I can relay back to them. Yeah, that's all I get. Just keeping you informed, so I mean...
And I'm just saying, I know you know that most of the people up here are getting to learn, but your tying in really good for a town and gown stuff is the mayor, Marye, so you want to make sure you get any numbers or any communications with him as well, keep him off the breast on things and what's going on, whatever.
I want to work with Mr. Meese, because Mr. Meese has had a town and gown for the county.
Okay. Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Appreciate you showing up.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go right into room number five committee. This is Tim Charles with the Finance and Budget Committee.
The Finance Committee met today at 1:00. Vice President Carroll was sitting in, and we reviewed the bills, so it's nothing unusual. And I made a motion to pay the bills as presented.
That's second. A second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ahs?
This, we have no statewide tax exoneration requests for this month. And the next item on the list is to approve the elevation certificate application for low to moderate income residents, and that, we had deferred that from last month, so I kind of deferred above.
Yeah, we were, a question arose during the meeting last month with Mr. Kuark concerning the selection of Kuark Associates as provider of survey services for this particular grant program. I believe we were informed that the low group price rate was $425 per certificate. Following the meeting, I talked to Mr. Siegel up at CDP-COG, and I thought he was going to be here, but apparently he's not coming. A question came up as to how that entity was hired to perform this service, and Mr. Siegel told me that under federal regulations, they went out and sent out six proposals for requests of ability to perform this service. They received three back, two of which were quite high, and then they had the one from Kuark Associates at $425 per certificate. This was a procedure they had used in other federal procurement situations. Got a reading from the federal government with regard to use of flood funds, and said this met the Federal Procurement Act provisions. Underneath the Pennsylvania law, since this is professional services, it didn't have to be openly bid. When I queried Mr. Siegel about whether or not they thought about advertising to it, he informed me that they usually receive between 30 and 40 responses, which they go through, and most of which are not applicable, but they chose to go with the six requests, and that's what they used. They proposed to council that this program go forward. Council is not the one providing the services, neither is CDP-COG. It's Kuark and Associates under contract to provide the services for the survey. So the borough in and of itself is not providing the service, nor is CDP-COG, they're just providing the mechanism by which those services can be paid for, and that Kuark and Associates will be the ones to provide the service. So with that in mind, it's up to council what they want to proceed, but that's the information I received.
Any question on that? I don't know if everybody wrote the sheet from last time with the figures that were brought up. That's why we're supposed to come in until tonight. Any questions or anything else? Tim, did you want to return else?
No, I just wanted to know, as this is presented, we're all right moving forward on this?
Yep, and that's from what he informed me, and then we have this pink sheet here, which says $425. Now, I pressed Mr. Siegel, and if anybody else who wants to get services with regard to their own elevation certificates, that's perfectly fine, this is not an all-inclusive thing. This is just for people who want to apply for the low to moderate income levels, if they meet the levels and want to make an application, their certificates will be provided for at that no cost below landowner, and the price will be $425. But if anybody wants to get their own certificates, that's fine.
And they've done it. Tim, you want to make a recommendation for number three?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the elevation certificate application for low to moderate income residents.
I have a second. We have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, the next, the next three items we do every year, it's to consider the Resolution 2017-03 pertaining to the exoneration of Mike Bulley. It's, the three of them are combined in the resolution. The exoneration for the delinquent real estate taxes, the uncollectible per capita taxes, and the delinquent per capita taxes for 2016. I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2017-03.
Second. And we have a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the next item is a follow-up to that one. It's authorize Burkeheimer Associates to collect the delinquent per capita taxes for 2016 that are determined to be collectible. I make a motion to authorize Burkeheimer to collect their delinquent per capita taxes for 2016 that are collectible.
Okay. Second. We have a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The last item is our orange sheet. It's the quotation for the spring cleanup. On the backside, it has the dates, Monday, April 10th, and Tuesday, April 11th, and then the specifications for the request for the quotes. So I make a motion that we approve the request for purchase for 2017 park cleanup as presented.
And that's to go out for bid?
That's to go out for bid.
Bid.
Advertise and go for bids.
Okay.
Request for proposal.
Request for proposal.
All those in favor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, anything else, Tim?
No, that's it, from the Finance Committee.
Very much. Public facilities?
Another one's worse.
No report. Our report is next, number C. I have no report at this time. Community activities, as Richard Meese?
I have nothing this month.
Nothing this month. Personnel management, Mr. Radnitsky's out of town. Paul, was there anything you needed to?
No, Mr. Carter.
Okay. Safety, Mr. Matt?
Nothing.
So the interior board, you have a copy in your packet, letter of reservation, did you want to share anything else on that? Your stuff is quite material, okay, Paul?
Mr. Khan, actually, that's how he pronounces it. Prior to coming, moving to Seale for a borough, he actually served on another as an in hearing board in Monroe Township. He would serve as chairman there, and there hasn't been any movement on his in hearing board, so he has, Warren has continued to serve as an alternate. And Opera Tany presented himself for him to be considered, in lieu of, perhaps on the planning commission, but that will come up later in the agenda, but at least per the purple sheet, that's before you write an "A," so it's just to acknowledge and accept his letter of resignation. Motion to accept this written rap.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. That was Tim.
Yes.
For the second, I think. All those in favor, indicate.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Planning mission, you have that in your packet as well? Paul?
We have my sheet, we have the green sheet, which is, it's minutes, they're in draft at the present time until they are accepted at the next meeting. You can see what the agenda included. It was a discussion of land development proposed by Scott and Melanie Schaefer. The planning module, it was the same development. A discussion, continued discussion on the telecommunications tower, and then it was other Moving on to number two. I would like the Borough Council to consider appointing Warren Kahn to serve a term to expire, December 31st, 2020, on the planning commission. We presently do have a vacancy for him to fill. Mr. Kahn attended the most recent meeting, participated, and expressed an interest in serving the borough on that basis. My recommendation is that you do consider pulling.
So you'd like to make that motion?
Let's go move.
All right, and we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second. Mr. Meese. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Just to make sure, we have two vacancies. If this one just filled one, we still have one more vacancy, so keep that in mind. Okay, Paul?
Thank you. Number three, I like to look at my, Scott Schaefer being present tonight, and his professional, right there, Mr. Jim Gross. I just want to acknowledge Mr. Schaefer, he, I think, did what we encourage bold offers to do, and that is to spend some time with a plan that is a pre-submission plan, or otherwise known as sketch plan. Through Jim, and through actually Mr. Pittcart, who I think has vacated the meeting right now, but they spent some time with Scott, and meeting with staff informally to discuss a concept plan. And the concept plan was to construct a building to the rear of the inn, approximate size of 60 by 60, that's a two-story structure. And Scott wanted to capture a tenant that was losing their lease on a property, that's just saying in general up on the strip, and it happened to be a fitness center that was currently in operation. I think Mr. Schaefer saw that this could be a win-win situation, not only for the business, but also an amenity, amenity to those that are staying on the inn, to provide a facility that he does not have now. Mr. Schaefer and Mr. Gross submitted a plan on December 26th, 22nd, and went before the planning commission on January 18th, and here we are tonight, 46 days later, I'm going to say 46 days later, for you to consider final plan approval. You have before you tonight, I know that you've seen a copy of the plan, a resolution that spells out a conditional approval of this plan. It is specific reference to the initial review by your Borough Engineer, John Kuark. Scott and Mr. Gross have done supplemental submissions since the planning commission on January 18th. They've also submitted a plan of correction, which addresses most, if not all, of those plan review comments. There's very little really in this resolution that I'm asking you to consider adoption tonight that's really left. Because of planning issues, the zoning compliance issues have been addressed, or has not been any subdivision land development, requests of waivers, in general, the plan complies with OSADO and zoning warrants. In addition to the resolution, there's also a, as contained within the resolution, a reference to, I'm going to call it a postpart. And this is an exemption from the planning module that would otherwise be required, that this property was not currently serviced by public sewer. So by adopting of this resolution, you are also acknowledging the exemption part that will be mailed into the DEP. It is the DEP that has the final say, and also there is a requirement that Mr. and Mr. Schaefer pay the required fees according to our fee schedule to reserve capacity for water and sewer to service property, and subject to all of that, Esprah will also be stepping in line, so that this development can go forward. Mr. Schaefer has seen a copy of the resolution, as did Mr. Gross. I believe that he is willing to acknowledge that he would accept the conditions as they are provided to you tonight, and a resolution before you for consideration.
Okay, so we have adoption of Resolution 2017. And the indicator on your sheet down at the bottom there, it was the type of layer, it was O3, if you change that to O4, do we have someone that can motion?
Make a motion to accept Resolution 2017, Tac 4, for the Land Development Plan, there in 214, North Market.
We have a second?
Sir.
We have a second. All those in favor, someone by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? We have no ayes. Thank you. You're quite welcome, gentlemen. As Paul indicated, it was very short and sweet, and you did a lot of work, and we appreciate all the time you put in, and the preliminaries with what you did to get to where you're at today.
Yes.
As Paul indicated, very short period of time to move forward. We appreciate your taking the time with us to do that, to get that accomplished.
I just want to make a comment also. This property, as it was referred to, had legacy, and that there was something there called Rhodes Mill, and there is the thought that perhaps there's still some things that are very beneath the finished grade as we now know it. And I will be having a discussion with Mr. Kravitz about really the need or necessity to have a maintenance bond for what is really a very minor stormwater management facility. And so that will be worked out between now and, let me say, the final plan and then reporting. They're going to be working on a legal description of the easement that's required for the relocated sanitary sewer, which is really a public sanitary sewer for conveyance, and one I would mind, I understand, is just the separation between the sanitary sewer and the water line that's going to serve the, serve the building. But I think these are issues that will work through as we develop this plan for reporting prior to construction.
And sitting on planning, that was all discussed and agreed upon, and getting through.
Do you guys have any questions?
No? Good. Thank you so much. Any other questions, council? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over. We're gonna be on civil service commission. No reports in packet, anything bad to that, Paul?
No.
Shade tree, anything?
No.
No? Okay, Borough. New station report, Mayor?
Everybody should have a final annual report for 2016 in the sheet. I believe wherever necessary, he has pretty detailed information involving these photographs and documentation of activities.
Any questions for the mayor on police report?
Was there a month's?
It comes, they're always up two months. I asked the same question. We had that gap in there that I always ask. Thank you, Mayor.
Sometimes it'll be a month.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions for the mayor? Okay. Solicitor's report, Borough Solicitor's report.
You have in front of you in your packet, I believe it's the blue sheet. Ordinance eight twenty-seven. This has been advertised. This is to set the tax collection fees for the year 2018. As you know, that position's coming up for election for starting in 2018. So you have to set the fees by ordinance prior to that, otherwise the fees that are in place now would continue. Compensation for real estate taxes are set forth in section three. Three dollars, two five cents per bill collected two thousand eighteen. Three eighty for nineteen, three ninety-five, two thousand twenty, and four ten for two thousand twenty-one. And then for capital taxes are there at fifty cents per cap, per capita bill. They're due to have reporting and payment of taxes set forth in section number five. And there's also a fee for each additional business day up to a maximum of twenty-five dollars to overdue returns. That's gonna be one of the issues that will be addressed this coming month, or this month, at the Snyder County Tax Commission, Tax Collection Commission, meeting up at Middleburg, to have the tax collectors be subject to a reporting requirement and making returns because there are several municipalities in Snyder County where they're not as quick as Mr. Bolt. So that's an important thing to have in this ordinance, that they do meet certain deadlines to make their returns, or to make their deposits. And that's all we have. Ten more to go. Hundred twenty-five dollars for the year, whether it continues. Any questions?
Okay, we make a...
Motion to accept.
Okay, we have a second.
Order is eight twenty-seven.
Eight twenty-seven from the solicitor, the ordinance. We need a second.
I second.
We have a second. All those in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Borough Engineers Report is in front of you. Paul, do you wanna comment on anything on that?
No, there's really nothing special.
Okay. Under the Treasurer's report.
Everybody has a copy of the monthly report for the community. If you have any questions?
We need a domsha.
Make a motion to approve what's presented?
Oh, we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor, you can aye.
Aye.
Do you have a copy of the street cleaning schedule and cleanup? That will be advertised included with the next newsletter.
We have the motion on that, too?
Yep.
And so move.
Okay, we have a second on that?
I'll second.
We have a second. All those in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
If anybody has any changes or corrections, let me know. Recycling schedule is the last one. And there is a change on that. Under the high-grade office paper, they do not want it in plastic bags anymore. And that would be corrected.
Need a motion?
Yep.
So move.
And we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, you can aye.
Aye.
Can I make a comment on this?
Yeah.
I talked to our coordinator, and I'm sorry, it was, I think it was last year. I got quite a few calls after the taxes, and it's probably gonna come up again. And I was thinking about shredding for our residents. And I think she did some checking into it. I think something in the back of my mind, when you and I talked, Sherry, you remind me, I think it was a cost factor. But I'd like to maybe dive back into that and look at that as maybe a possibility that we could do for our residents. There's a truck that comes around and does it. Maybe just look at that again and see if it's something, because I know I'm gonna get phone calls. People get the old taxes, they wanna get rid of them. Why can't we do that? They see it in the newspaper, other areas where the truck comes in and does shredding. I didn't realize it was so expensive, but if you're with mine, I'd like to have McKenzie look at that again and bring me back up to speed on what that is and maybe bring that back and see.
Maybe that would be something that would be good, Snyder County recycling event. You know, because you're going there for specific purposes, you know, taking your appliances and that. Maybe they should include it with their, maybe you should check that, yeah.
Is that okay if I go ahead and talk to McKenzie and maybe make that contact and see if that's something that possibly could be connected for our residents as well?
Or the county.
Yeah. I'm not sure what's gonna go on with the can with our recycling program, so, but yeah. Because I know, I don't know if anybody else does, and maybe somebody in the room can elaborate, when they do, they get quite a bit of paper, and we try to be conscious and try to get stuff recycled and what have you. And I think it's time that, you know, that maybe we could do something for our residents and maybe that's something, something else, maybe that's something we could look at that would be approved. Okay, that's it. Let's move on. Okay. You got anything else, Sherry?
Well, that's in the media. Oh, no, the articles for the newsletter?
Yep, yep.
Deadline is two seventeen, if you want something in the newsletter.
Okay, Sony, that's your orange one? I'm sorry, Borough, yeah.
Andrew.
First, I'd like to have, I wanna acknowledge personally, and perhaps I do acknowledge Sharon Patton for her work. And we had a auditor here on January the fifth, and he looked at the Pennsylvania liquid fuels, and there were no findings. And Sherry, you continue to do a really nice, fabulous job in keeping us under trouble. You get a star.
Star for yeah.
How they work the performance, I think it's like for ten days following the Christmas holiday, they pick up and shred the Christmas trees curbside. So they did that early in the month of January. We continue to have those so-called nuisance storms, maybe not a plow storm, but certainly we use salt. We use salt as anti-skid material, and that required response a couple of times in the month of January. You know by now that the Borough was contacted by one of the investors that's interested in medical marijuana and Borough Steel and Grove. The name of this firm is from near Wilkes-Barre, and it is called Red Side by the Medics. I had received a telephone call from their chief counsel there. And this research was kind of taking the life of its own, if you will. And there has been some municipalities in Pennsylvania that once the Medical Marijuana Act was adopted by the General Assembly, they moved forth to amend the zoning ordinances specifically acknowledging medical marijuana as a use. And that would be as a dispensary or as a grower processor. So there's many municipalities that thought it was incumbent upon them to amend the zoning ordinance. To be honest with you, I was thinking the same thing. And I did acquire a model ordinance. McKenzie and I attended a workshop recently, and we consulted with our solicitor, Robert Kravitz, who, as you know, represents other municipalities as well, as Steel and Grove. And really, the bottom line is that this activity is so regulated by the adoption of the legislation in Pennsylvania that there's very little for a municipality to do. In fact, the law really, I'm gonna say, goes as far as prohibits a municipality from attacking on any additional requirements, for instance, for a dispensary use. Because of dispensary use, it's really compared to a retail drugstore.
Excuse me?
It's a retail pharmacy. So wherever you allow retail drugstore, you should be allowing dispensary. And it just so happens in Steel and Grove, we do permit the use in three different commercial districts. The central business district, the C one commercial district, and the residential commercial district. We refer to that as R C. The only contact that we've had is for dispensary. And just to make a, just a brief comment about grower processor. Again, to the legislature saying you should not really make it overly cumbersome for a grower and processor of marijuana. If they are to locate in one of your industrial districts, we have one, it's a light industrial district. As long as we allow manufacturing and assembly use, we should also allow knowledge that a grower processor is also permitted in that zoning district. It's been a learning curve on my part, and you know, this is not really to be looked at as a negative. This program is really being rolled out to help a lot of seriously ill people that really need, as a medication, and in the case of a dispensary, the oil, we want them. And perhaps many of you know certain people in that vein. And from an economic development perspective, it's going to attract people to Steel and Grove, and perhaps they'll spend some other expendable income in Steel and Grove while we're here. Taking air shopping here, et cetera. There is a large sum of money that's required for these investors to make applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Health. There's a permit fee that is non-refundable, because there's still a large sum of money that's required if they're ultimately granted a permit. And the opening date of this first round of competition runs from February the twentieth through March twentieth. The state is divided up into different regions. In our region of north-central Pennsylvania, there's only gonna be a limited number of dispensaries and growers, and I think it's actually two apiece. So whether or not Steel and Grove is chosen for this first round or a subsequent round, it's really yet to be seen. So like I said, over the last thirty days, it's been a real learning curve and experience. And just wanted to share that with you tonight. Moving on.
Yep, you're still here.
The lavender sheet, White Light Chief, please acknowledge a letter of resignation with regret from Charlie Benner. He had served the last ten years for the Borough at the Penn Valley Airport Authority. And he just acknowledged on his own that it's time to move on. So please consider accepting his letter of resignation.
We'd like to get approved by making the motion to accept his letter of resignation.
I so move.
Second?
I'll second.
We have a second? Oh, that was me saying. All those in favor, say yes, say aye.
Aye.
Any names?
Thanks for consideration, and Mr. Hendricks says acknowledged that he would be willing to replace Mr. Benner as to appoint Shane Hendricks to replace Charles Benner as your representative to the airport authority.
We need a motion?
Make a motion to appoint.
Shane Hendricks, okay. Now we have a second by Mr. Meeks. All those in favor, you can aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Congratulations, sir.
Upstanding.
You've been upstanding, okay. Shane's upstanding. Okay, Paul?
Yeah, you have a copy of a newsletter article that was published about a week or so ago. And there's gonna be a meeting, and this is for anyone who knows, coming this year, on Wednesday, February the fifteenth, at the Middle School. That's gonna start at six thirty P M. It's gonna be a combination of presentation and open house. And this is hosted by Pendott on the Central Sustahana about a throughway project. They ran into a complication with design, and that a part of the alignment was going through, past, or at least in close proximity to these ash cases, which is not working out very well based upon their scientific engineering data. So I encourage you to see if you might have time to attend that meeting, and then you can find out what the next steps are. Next item, just a reminder, the annual conference of the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs is in Hershey, May seventh to May tenth. And just a reminder, please remit your statements of financial interest to Shelley, Lieutenant's Office, by May first of this year.
Moving on to zoning?
Yep, we have the blue sheet that was prepared by McKenzie, misses the activity. It's, I guess you'd say for January, January.
Hart's record?
McKenzie also prepared a screen color sheet that describes some of the recreation program offerings. You might know about Tai Chi, there's painting class, photography class, selling class. And her report also gets into some of the preliminary work that she's working on for the supervised summer recreation program. I wanna comment about the Little Norway Two, and I wanna thank Mr. Shane Hendricks for his attempts, preliminary attempts at getting the ice skating park open. It just doesn't seem like other nations are gonna cooperate with us this year. Ball Nicos are probably number one volunteer for Little Norway Two for the Recreation Board. He expressed his disappointment today. I just wanna repeat a quote that I heard from Punxsutawney Phil event. And the accuracy of Punxsutawney Phil has been one hundred percent. It's just that the weather has been incorrect some of the time. So even though the firm's only, we were very, apparently cold winter this year, we just didn't experience that, and it doesn't look like we're gonna be able to open this year.
It is cold, you know, and it gets a skim on it, and that's about it. That's all that's even there. You know, like today, and we have next couple of days, and then we're gonna drop again down to the twenties, and it's just not a long duration that we can get that thing solid up, so. Okay, thank you. Then I just wanna put it on record to let McKenzie know, I saw the article prior to our packets coming out, and again, she's, she's really keeping up. It was in the newspaper, it's similar to what we get on our packets. So, I mean, you know, she's staying on top of things and trying to get things and getting people involved. I'm really pleased on that, and some of the people in my community or out of that have indicated that they appreciate that information and things that are going on in the community for this. Okay, we're gonna go to the Sales Row Municipal. Nothing, nothing there. E Snyder, you have that in your packet, that's the orange one? Any questions, any comments on that? Paul, looking for North Houston? Okay, we're gonna go to new business, council members, any new business anybody would like to bring up at this time? Mayor, is there anything else you wanna add, or?
Nothing new.
Nothing new? Others, this is a public comment period, we have two of these. Is there anybody else in the community or in the public that would like to make any comments or indicate anything? Okay, that's it. Mr. Kravitz, do we have an executive session by any chance?
Oh, I don't wanna ruin your record.
Well, these folks, they're holding, you know, they're holding us up here, you know, these questions.
This is the quickest, forty-nine minutes. No, other than Judge Huddock has our briefs in answer to Escrip's motion for summary judgment. And I'll be up to the judge to determine whether or not there's any outstanding material facts that need to be developed in a trial. We think that there are. Paul and Sherry did a great job assisting and putting this together, so it's in front of the judge now. But I think in all candor, we're gonna be on a trial May the eighth of nine.
That's tendered, May eighth of nine?
That's set in stone.
Oh, it is?
It's set in stone.
Okay. And the public, the public can... And the public, the public can come back, it's not closed, it's open to the public. Does it affect any members on council if they showed up, is there any?
No problems there. It's just in trial, I'm not having any...
Okay. Very good. Any comments or anything, ask the solicitor about that? I'll ask again, is there any comments from the floor? Would you like to say anything about what's going on up at the community center, or anything?
Construction has started, which is very exciting, or, and so they, you know, they're working on demolition right now, and we're, you know, getting our con, our...
So things will be open for the summer?
Too late summer, late summer, yeah.
In case we start getting cold, make sure the office knows, and he'll call us and, you know, what have you.
Thank you.
And she's doing the newsletter, if you have something you wanna put in.
I circled that, I know.
Yeah.
Okay. And is it a quarterly newsletter?
Twice a year, March and September.
Okay, so this is, okay, this would cover late summer. Okay, thank you.
That'd be nice to have in there.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Thank you, folks, for coming out. It's been a pleasure.